No, I'm saying that anything get continued? It's the summertime where she's at short meetings. It's crazy. I've noticed that. So remind me your last name again. Fleming, one Am right. I'm ready.
All right, 7:01. Means we're going to start the meeting. First off, I want to introduce Ken Federman on the left from License Inspections. Bob McTeague and Beau also, our court stenographer, Cindy Oliverio. And I'll call the board, I'll call the... Here.
Mark.
Here.
Colleen.
Here.
Andy.
Here.
All right, first order of business, Carol Staines. Are you here? Okay. Please come up.
Hello, everybody.
Hello.
Hi, how are you?
Raise your right hand, please.
Yes.
Do solemnly swear the testimony you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth to help you guys.
I do.
Can you bring up your...
I'm sorry. Just make sure the green light's on and you talk into the microphone, please.
Okay.
Bring up your proof of mailings and your posting.
And you are Carol?
Yes.
Thanks a lot. Okay, we can proceed.
All right, whenever you're ready.
I don't know what to say. I, I, I don't know what to say. I like to put everything on paper. I'm like really nervous. I'm here because I wanted to get, I know I'm over the variance for the pool. I wanted to get a permit. That's why I'm here.
So you haven't put in the pool on yet?
No, I, I want to have the pool. I got cement. I was told that I had to have a hearing, so that's why I'm here.
That's good that you're coming here first.
Questions for the board?
I don't think my thing's working. It goes to red. I'm sorry. Are you putting the pool in the front yard?
No, I had gave you, I have a copy for everybody and you'll see, it's on the side. Can I give everybody a copy of this?
Sure.
To show everybody? I have two lots. There's something like in front of my house.
It's okay.
That's right.
I have two big lots and everything is on the side of the house. To me, that's the side. There's nothing in the front.
Thank you.
Sorry about that.
No problem.
So it's on the side of the garage. That's the lot that I'm talking about. Took me a long time to find this house. It had a lot of property. I have a lot of grandkids. I got 17 grandkids and because of COVID, like, we lost three people through COVID. And my thing is about family. Like, I got a lot of grandkids. I don't want them in the street. I want them with me and have fun. That's the whole purpose of it.
Colleen, just to better answer your question, so what the lot is situated, this would be considered her front yard where she's placing the pool? And that's why she's here for variance to allow that.
That's why I asked, because it does front step back.
Yep.
Yeah, because I don't have no backyard. That's my yard is where my house is. I have no backyard. Everything is in the front.
Okay, so you're seeking a 42% impervious surface when 35% is allowed, correct?
I'm sorry, 42 where?
42%
I don't know.
Impervious surface, including the pool, when 35% is allowed.
Yes.
Also, you want relief from the front yard setback, correct?
Yeah.
All right. So Bob, your letter of April 28th, you'd say is accurate.
Ken, is your mic on?
As the relief is...
Ken, I can't hear you. Is your mic on?
Sorry. You would say the letter you drafted dated April 28th is accurate as to the relief requested?
Yes, it is.
Okay.
This is the first time I ever bought a house or anything, so I didn't know any of this. If I would have known, you know, what I had to do, or I didn't know anything, you know? That's why I'm here.
Bob, you have anything to add? Do you have anything to add?
No, nothing to add. No. Just that the zoning code does allow a swimming pool in the front yard, but it does have to meet the front yard setback, so.
How big is the swimming pool?
It's 18 by 30, 18 by 33.
Is it above or in ground?
It's above, yeah.
Anyone in the audience want to speak for or against? Motion from the board?
I'll give a motion for.
I'll second.
Call the board.
Mark Demarcus?
Yes.
Gerard?
Yes.
Colleen?
Yes.
Andy, yes.
All right, you're approved. You'll just, you'll get to the board.
Thank you. Big hugs to everybody. Thank you so much. My grandkids are going to love you guys. Thank you.
We'll be over there to swim.
You're very welcome.
All right, next, next order of business, Jay Tretter and Sons. Good, are you, if you want to get sworn in?
Can you raise your right hand, please? Do solemnly swear the testimony you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth to help you guys.
It will. Yes, I am.
Can you state your first name, please?
Joe Tretter.
Thank you.
Mr. Tretter, can you bring up your mailings and your proof of posting? Did you post your property?
Excuse me? Yes.
Okay, and did you take a picture of it, or?
Uh, no, I didn't. Did you guys take the picture?
I have a picture on my phone.
She got a picture on her phone.
Okay, I'll, if he does, I'll take, take a look at it. Okay, very good. Thank you. We're good to go.
Yep.
Whenever you're ready.
We're asking for rear yard setback relief and impervious surface. We want to put a small 11 by 17 addition for a master bathroom.
Tell the board why you need the bathroom.
Uh, she has taken care of her father-in-law and her husband just got, you know, came down with some problems too, so they needed additional bathroom with a walk-in shower.
Thank you.
How far is the setback you're asking for?
Uh, five feet. Which leaves 15 feet still to the backyard.
Any questions for the board?
What's the impervious that you have?
I think it was 38% maybe. I don't know. I'm not sure. I don't even know if I got that information. Am I close?
Bob, anything in your file on the impervious surface relief?
I think you've, I think you've brought about that 38%, Ken.
Okay, when 35 is allowed. Right, all right. 3%. Variance above, well, not 3%, but 3%, percentage points.
Any questions from the board? Bob, you got anything?
Nothing to add, Mark. Pretty straightforward.
Anybody in the audience want to speak for or against? All right, need a motion now.
I'll make a motion to pass.
I'll approve, or I second.
Call the board.
Mark?
Yes.
Gerard?
Yes.
Colleen?
Yes.
Andy, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Good luck.
All right, next order of business, Teyron Thomas.
Can you raise your right hand, please? Do solemnly swear the testimony you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth to help you guys.
No, it's not that. This is not the carryover.
Do you need my word?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Oh, I rem, right, we didn't have the mailings last time. Thank you. Yep. All right, let's see. Okay, we're good. Good to go.
Oh, so I'm just here for variance to operate the business as a basketball gym?
What kind of hours do we need to work?
The gym is open from, and during fall, I mean, the summer is open from nine to nine. Regular, the other months is four to nine.
Is this the way you're doing it there?
Yeah.
So you're going to be paid high?
Yeah.
How many kids would you anticipate?
It's at least 200. Huh?
You should have a little bit of help then, right?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Is that at, is that at one time, or?
No, just total, around total. We have it. Because we have like different, I train, I run, going to run basketball leagues, summer camps.
Okay, so it's not 200 people at one time?
No, 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 no.
It varies depending on the program.
I'm just saying like total.
Got you. So this is a special exception request under B3.
Ken, can you repeat that again? The mic, I can't hear you.
Sorry, this is a special exception request under B3 of 205-36.
Any questions from the board? Hey, Bob, hang on. Anything?
Uh, no, just nothing but positive feedback from the community that Mr. Paulson wants to...
Okay. Anybody in the audience want to speak for or against this project? All right, I guess we need a motion.
I'll make a motion for.
I'll second it.
Call the board. Mark? Yes.
Gerard?
Yes.
Colleen?
Yes.
Andy, yes. All right, you're approved. Good luck.
Thank you. So is there, um, is there anything that the property manager says you want to do? All right, thank you.
Next order is Equipment Services LLC. Oh, wait.
No, you're 7,800 Bristol LLC.
Oh, yeah, my bad.
You're up. You can proceed.
Good evening. My name is Aristides Christakis. I'm with the firm of Buckley, Bryan, Maguire &amp; Morris. I go by Ari in case you need to shout out to me. Just as a preliminary order of business, I do want to point to two exhibits that have supplemented the record tonight. Exhibit A9 is an affidavit of posting of notice of this continued hearing from the May 16th, 2022, meeting of this board. Exhibit A10 is an affidavit of mailing of that same notice.
Very good.
I would be happy to sort of summarize our case, but as you may recall, the last time that the applicant was here, the board suggested a continuance in order to have ongoing dialogue with the township. That dialogue has occurred. We've met at least twice with Mr. McTagg and his staff as recently as last week. On Wednesday, we walked the site together, identified any issues that we'll be resolving with his staff on an ongoing basis, but obviously the...
Can you just slow down for a minute?
Certainly.
We identified any issues that we'll be resolving.
On an ongoing basis.
Thank you.
But the initial issue of use remains with respect to the two parcels, which you may recall from the last meeting were identified as parcel 004 and parcel 005, which provide an access driveway from Route 13 onto the applicant's property.
Why don't you do this? Mr. Licon was not sitting last time, so why don't you give us a quick summary of the overall project and why you think you're entitled to the relief that you're seeking?
Certainly. So this is a lawful non-conformity case. The property... Lawful non-conformity? The property has been used for several decades as a truck terminal. The applicant, my client, purchased that property in 2021 from the prior owner, which was Evans Transportation Company. There are several parcels that comprise the tract. And if you look at Exhibit A6 in the packet in front of you, you'll see a parcel map that describes those parcels. The driveway to the site enters from Route 13 onto what's been identified as parcel 005. It then goes about 300 feet deep into the parcel and takes a left, travels across what's been identified as parcel 004, and then arrives at what's been identified on Exhibit A6 as parcel 003. Parcel 003 is improved with two buildings, both of which have been used for the entire duration of the trucking operation as part of the trucking operation. And the applicant's intention is to continue to do that into the future. There's also a secondary building that provides office space for the logistics companies that are based out of the site. And what you may recall from the last meeting is that the entire property is divided into areas of parking for various users or tenants, for lack of a better term, who use an area to store trucks and related equipment in between using the truck for delivery purposes. No cargo is stored at the site. It's not a warehousing operation. It really is just the logistics for the trucks themselves. There is some maintenance and repair that takes place at the site, but again, it's limited to the trucks that are based out of that location or stored there for a transient period of time. So that's the overview of the use. The question before the board tonight is whether the lawful non-conformity, which the township agrees applies to parcel 003 where the structures are located, whether that lawful non-conformity also applies to parcel 005 and 004. It is our contention that it does. We think that both the, one of the complicating factors, I should say here, is that we've not been able to identify or locate the township zoning ordinance that was in effect at the time the use commenced. It's just not available. We've looked with the township. We've looked at the county law library and so forth. We've done an exhaustive search for that document, but we've not been able to find it. Instead of that, what we've provided are files from the township, documents from the township files, including a decision of this board from 1983 authorizing a billboard on the site which describes all three of the properties as being used in concert. That's probably the best we're going to be able to do, given the fact that we can't locate the original zoning ordinance. But that should be adequate proof and substantial evidence on the record for this board to determine that the properties, all three properties, 003, 004, and 005, have been used continuously for that trucking purpose, basically as a driveway access and for the storage of trucks.
What's the Bucks County Maps, then, data portal show from 1958 and 65? Because I think this is new.
I'm sorry, from 19...
So, so there are exhibits here, which I think may, may help your cause.
Sure.
From 1958 and 1965.
Yes.
How do these county maps relate to these properties?
So the historical maps show the use of the property and the fact that there was never any sort of barrier or fence or subdivision or separate use of those parcels during that entire period of time. You show one continuous property put to the same use. My understanding is that originally this was a railroad siding for steel deliveries for the construction of Levittown? Siding for steel deliveries for the construction of Levittown? But that after that use was completed or no longer necessary, it became a truck terminal.
Okay, and I think last time the board's concern was that Mr. McTagg and the township would have a good understanding of what is going to go on out there as opposed to what has historically been occurring at the site and whether that's going to change. So, Mr. McTagg, did you get, are you comfortable with what's going on out there?
Yes, Ken, we narrowed it down. They're still working on a parking plan for us to section off what companies are using, what parking spaces, so we can get use in occupancies for each user. They had some other stuff going on that's all getting straightened out, so we're going in the right direction. And I think what was testified, what's in this packet here, is all valid.
Okay, so you, you agree as a condition, any approval that you cooperate with Mr. McTagg and implement what he needs to implement so the township has control of the site?
Absolutely.
From a use and occupancy standpoint?
Yes, absolutely.
Now, do you have a truck in place? That's been there since the 60s, is that correct?
That's correct.
Yeah, I remember. I mean, I was in and out there a lot of times.
Is the CDL school still functioning there and operating?
So the CDL school i- is functioning. We have put that on hiatus in, while we resolved this issue about the underlying use. If it wasn't going to be used as a truck terminal anymore, the CDL school wouldn't make any sense. But going forward, that is one of the items that we're going to resolve with the township. And we may be back before this board seeking relief for that at some time in the future.
I have one more. There's essentially, it's more of a pass-through there that you share with the water authority. I see on the photos there's still the pile of dirts, dirt. Has that changed at all? Where, is that going to be closed off or is that going to remain open?
So as I understand it, I could have Mr. Kavachinsky come up here and testify to that extent, but my, my, when I was there last week, it looked as though it was fenced off. I think that that entryway has been closed at this point.
Because the agreement with the authority and with the owners would be that that would still be accessible by the authority vehicles, because it's...
If you'll give me one moment to consult with my client?
Is the previous attorney had given them the word on that?
Yeah, so my client informs me there is a gate and absolutely they'll provide access.
Yeah, there's a gate which is by then...
Yeah, they're going to need to swear you in if they're going to take...
Hi, Roman Kachkiski.
Can you spell your last name, please?
K-L-A-C-H-K-I-V-S-K-I.
Hey, whoa, slow down. K-L-A. Can you raise your right hand, please? Do solemnly swear the testimony you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth to help you guys.
I do.
And speak in the microphone, please.
I do.
Thank you.
So, Mr. Kavachinsky, as I understand it, there is a gate between your property and the adjacent municipality. Is that true?
That is correct.
Is that gate accessible to the municipality should they ever require access?
Yes.
And you agree to that as a condition as well?
Yes.
Yes.
Any other questions for the board? Anybody in the audience want to speak for or against this project? Need a motion?
I'll make a motion to pass it.
Call the board, or second?
I didn't hear your motion.
To, to allow it.
Yes.
Under the condition?
I'll second that.
Two conditions.
Call the board.
Mark?
Who, who seconded?
I'm sorry, there, there were two conditions mentioned. They're on the record.
You made the motion. Who seconded? Thank you.
Mark?
Yes.
Gerard?
Yes.
Colleen?
Yes.
Andy? Yes.
Thank you. Good evening.
You're welcome.
Now we're ready for Equipment Services LLC.
Good evening. Alan Toadvine here on behalf of the applicant. I provided a certification of service to your solicitor, which will mark as Exhibit A1. That is the certification of the notification to the neighbors required to receive notice and proof of that notice and also the posting of the property.
I agree it's an order.
Thank you. So let me just provide a brief background on this property. It's located at 5058 Bristol Pike. It's tax parcel 05065083-002. My client, the applicant, is the lessee pursuant to a five-year lease with a five-year option on this property. The owner of the property is Sriji Krupa LLC, the former operator of that location. Yes. So we're here tonight over the fact that there was some confusion as to the actual zoning of the property. And what I'd like to do is introduce a couple exhibits. First, we'll mark as applicant's Exhibit 2. And the next one I'd like to provide is, we'll mark as applicant's Exhibit 3. And that is a letter dated April 28th, 2022. Sorry, but I, I forgot to mention that A2 was dated January 21st, 2022. Sorry, but I forgot to mention that A2 was dated January 21, 2022. So both exhibit A2 and A3 are issued, were issued by Bristol Township. And as you can see, A2, the use and occupancy permit indicates the property is zoned M2, whereas A3 indicates the property is zoned M1. And the reason that that's an issue for my client is the sale of used motor vehicles is not permitted in M1, but it is permitted in M2. So that's the background on the file. I'd like to call my first witness. Have to raise your right hand.
Do you solemnly swear the testimony you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth that I've got?
Yes.
Can you spell your name, please?
Michael E. Dockerty. Mr. Dockerty, what is your relationship to Equipment Services, the applicant in this matter?
I'm the owner and president.
Okay. And Equipment Services, could you describe what they do?
Yeah, we sell aerial lift equipment, JLG Genies. Aerial lift equipment. So basically anything that goes up in the air, scissor lift, man lift, telescopic forklift, United rentals, anything they rent, we sell. We buy equipment used, we refurbish it, and we resell it.
Now, has Equipment Services been in operation prior to this location?
Correct. We were at 6240, the Window Wizards lot, about third mile north on the same side of 13. And we were in Falls Township from, I'd say, 2004 until 2012 when we moved to Bristol.
Okay. And is the operation at the current location the same operation that was transpiring at the Window Wizards location?
Yes, exactly.
Okay. So, I've introduced the two letters from the township indicating that there's a discrepancy between the zoning of the property between M1 and M2. How did it come about that you requested the second letter from the township, the letter we've marked as exhibit A3?
We were transferring our dealer's license through Motor Vehicle in Harrisburg to the new location being 5052. And they, we got correspondence back from Motor Vehicle that we needed a zoning, make sure the zoning was right. And that's when Bristol sent us back a letter saying that we have a problem.
Okay. So I'm going to show you a letter dated April 14, 2022, from the State Board of Vehicle Manufacturers, Dealers, and Salesperson. Is that the letter you're referring to?
Yes.
Okay. I'm going to introduce exhibit A4, this letter dated April 14, 2022, from the State Board of Vehicle Manufacturers. Now, Mr. Dockerty, the request from the state was the impetus for you to request a letter from the township indicating that the sales of used motor vehicles was permitted. Is that accurate?
Correct.
Okay. And once you've got Mr. McTag's letter back, which we've marked as exhibit A3, was that the first time you became aware that the property was not permitted for the sale of used motor vehicles?
Correct.
Okay. And explain to the board, when we say sale of used motor vehicles, what we're actually referring to.
Well, in the aerial lift realm that we deal in, it would be a truck crane, titled vehicle. It could be a truck crane, hydraulic truck crane. It's an 80,000 pound registration with 100-foot crane on it. So this allows us to keep an open title. If we buy it for 200,000, I don't have to pay the 6% and wait for a title. I can flip it to other dealers with an open title. So it's imperative we have these. It's also applicable to our towables, air compressors, anything that's a titled vehicle. We need that. And that's usually our margin of profit that we operate within, you know, hopefully better. But yeah, the 6% is a game changer.
So it's your former location at Window Wizards, you had that, that permit from the state of Pennsylvania that permitted you to sell used motor vehicles?
Correct.
Right. Now, you don't sell your typical Toyota, Cadillac, or any of those motor vehicles that you would see driving up and down Route 13, is that correct?
It would be more of the utility type vehicles, starting with I'd F-250, but predominantly like an F-550 type, be mounted with a reading box or a Tarex crane or pal finger type crane.
Right. So these motor vehicles that you would like to sell from the location, they're not a motor vehicle that someone would use for their daily transportation. Is that accurate?
Correct.
Okay. These are all vehicles that have lifts and/or cranes attached?
That's correct.
Okay. I have no further questions for Mr. Dockerty.
Well, I just want to get it clear on the record that you agree it's an M1-zoned property?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, no, we're not disputing that.
Fair enough.
All right. Any questions for Mr. Dockerty?
Questions? Good for now.
Thank you.
All right. So what we're looking for this evening, obviously, is a partial use variance to permit the D17A use, which is automotive sales used. And the only reason we need that is, as I said, some of these vehicles that my client purchases, refurbishes, and then resells are actually titled by the state of Pennsylvania. So in order to sell those, we need that permitted use.
So you agree that any sales would be limited to that specific category of vehicle?
Correct.
He's not going to expand it and start a used car lot there?
No, he would not. And we would agree to a condition that he would never sell a motor vehicle that is typically used by the average individual as daily transportation.
And if he changed the nature of his operations, he realized he'd have to come back to the zoning board for approval?
That's correct. That's our test.
Yeah, Mark. Okay. Trying to get clarity. Any questions from the board? Bob, do you have anything?
No, Mark.
The audience wants to speak for or against this project? One question. How long have you guys been at that, this address?
This current address? Since September of 2021, is when the lease commenced.
I'll make a motion to pass it.
I'll second that.
Call the board.
Mark?
Yes.
Gerard?
Yes.
Colleen?
Yes.
Andy?
Yes.
Thank you.
Next to orders, JRZ LLC.
I'm here on behalf of the applicant, JRZ LLC. And we're here tonight requesting actually 10 variances in order to change the use from commercial to residential for this particular property in order to, I apologize, in order to construct three townhomes on the lot. I have tonight Rich Zober, who is the managing member of JRZ, and Larry Young, the engineer for the project. At this point, I think I would like to call Mr. Young so he can explain the nature and extent of the variances and why they're needed.
Do you solemnly swear the testimony you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth that I've got?
I do.
Say your name, spell, please.
Larry, L A R Y, Young, Y O U N G.
Thank you.
And Mr. Young, you're a licensed professional engineer in the state of Pennsylvania, correct?
Yes.
And you've appeared before this board before?
Yes.
So I'm going to offer Mr. Young as an expert in engineering. Mr. Young, could you describe this parcel in question and just advise the boards to the physical characteristics?
Yeah. The, the property is in the dark red outline. The zone line, it comes down through here like this. This is a commercial property. This is R3 in here, and this is commercial also. Doesn't mean the use is commercial, but it's in a commercial zone. The property is about 14,000 square feet. Mr. Zober acquired the piece probably like 10 or 11 months ago. Mr. Zober also owns this piece right here, plus across the street is his manufacturing facility. Mr. Zober indicated to us that he wanted to build residential townhouses. Obviously, they're not permitted in the C commercial district. The first time a R3 use, a townhouse use is permitted is in an R4 district. R4 district usually has lot areas of 1,600 square feet, 22-foot wide lot width, and a 50% impervious surface. So what we're trying to do is, if you can just switch to the next. Here's that property again. Didn't come out so good, but it's the green property, which is the driveway in it. Can you switch to the next one? This is an aerial, a 2015 aerial, that actually, the property did have a house on it before. So it had a residential use back then on the property. It had a garage and a long driveway. Can you go to the next? This is the plan that we submitted where this is the three, this is the 14,000 square foot lot, and we broke it up into three townhome, four, three, three townhomes. Each townhome is 20, 23-foot wide. It's about 600 square foot of footprint. So it's two-story, so it's a little over 1,200 square feet each unit. Mr. Zober has a lot of workers that are looking for, to rent property. So Mr. Zober is going to put prefab buildings up that are townhomes here. Each of these lots are, there's three lots that are being carved out. It is each with one unit on each lot. In the front will be the driveway, a shared parking lot with an underground stormwater facility. And they'll all have access to Coventry Avenue there. As Mr. Toadvine said, most of the variances are created because we're trying to put a residential use in a commercial district. It's going to be less dense as far as the pervious surface. We're only at 46% overall on that piece of property when it's permitted at 70% in the commercial property. And you want me to go through the?
Before you do that?
Okay.
I just want to provide to Mr. Federman, I jumped the gun. Here's our certification of service again with proof that...
Oh, my fault for not asking. Thank you.
Proof that the neighbors have been notified and the property's been properly posted. So, yeah, so I think it would be best if we just went through each of the variances requested and have Mr. Young indicate their need. So the first one's obvious. We're asking for a variance from section 20536A to permit the property to be used for a residential purpose, the A3 townhouse. The next variance is from section 20537A, and that has to do with lot area. Could you explain that to the board, Mr. Young?
Yeah, in a commercial district, you are required to have a 5,000 square foot lot area. We have two lots that are about 5,500 square feet. They're the outer lots. And the inner lot is basically set by how wide the townhouse is. So that comes in at about 3,300 square feet.
All right. But if this were located in a residential zone in R4, those lots would be more than adequate under the provisions of the zoning ordinance, correct?
Yes. That would, it would meet the area.
Okay.
And lot width.
All right. The next...
Lot width.
It would meet the area and the lot width. So the next variance that we're requesting is from 20537E2, and it has to do with side yards. Again, if you could explain that, Mr. Young?
Yeah, in the, in the, the ordinance requires a 15-foot side yard. Obviously, we have on the outer property, the two lots that are to the sides, there's 15.5 feet to the side. We have that, but the interior lot lines, obviously with the townhouse, there's no separation. So you're going to have zero lot lines, setbacks at the lot lines because of it's a townhouse.
And if this property were in the residential zone, there wouldn't be a requirement for side yards for the townhouses that we're asking the variance for, correct?
Only on the outside, the end units.
Right. But not for the interior?
Not the interior.
Okay. Then we're requesting a variance from section 20537E6 and 205109, and that has to do with buffering requirements. Could you explain that?
Yeah, any time you put different uses next to each other, the zoning ordinance, 37E6 is under the commercial use, and that directs you to section 109. That's why there's two sections there. Depending on, obviously, this is a residential use if we are permitted. Right next to this is a commercial use down here. There's commercial uses on this property as well as a residential use, and there's a residential use up there. So with the conflicting uses, you would either require a 25-foot yard set, buffer yard, or a 30-foot, depending on if it was industrial or commercial.
Right. But in this instance, it's residential, so it's sort of counterintuitive to be discussing a buffering when you're requesting a residential use. Typically, it's when you're requesting a commercial use.
Yeah, it's the other way around usually, when you're trying to buffer residential, putting in a commercial use.
Right. The next variance that we're requesting is from section 20516A3. Is that it? Oh.
A.
A.
Yeah.
A. And that has to do with the requirement of a minimum two-acre site for townhouse use, correct?
Correct. Correct. This is 14,000 square feet. Typically, townhouses are put in, in the A4 zone or R4 zone, and they usually have open space areas associated with it. So that's, that's basically, we don't have the two acres, it's only three townhouse units.
Typically, a townhouse development's much larger than three units, correct?
Correct.
Right.
With open space.
You're looking at 10 or 20 units, correct?
Right.
Okay. The next variance that we're seeking is from Section 20516A3B, and that has to do with the maximum density. Could you explain that to the board?
Yeah, the density typically, the, the last two that Mr. Tovine read from was from the use requirements under the zoning ordinance, so we're specifically under townhouse use now. Because the property is owing 14,000 square feet, we have a density of 9.03 dwelling units per acre.
I'm sorry, 9.03?
Dwelling units per acre. When the maximum density is eight dwelling units permitted under the townhouse use.
Thank you. And then we're asking for a variance from 20516A3D, and that has to do again with a townhouse use, open space requirement, is that accurate?
Correct. That's typically for bigger townhouse developments.
So they would require a percentage of the-
20 or 30% open space.
Okay, thank you. The next variance is from 205118F, and that's to permit shared parking. Could you show the board the parking configuration and why we're asking for a variance?
Yeah, your, your ordinance requires the three parking spaces per townhouse unit, and it has to be on its own lot. So just by the configuration of this lot, we, we have some lots that only have two parking spaces. So we're trying, there's a large, a pretty steep slope right here off the property near the railroad here, so we're trying to make use of where the existing driveway came in, and there's going to be a nine-car parking lot per se with a stormwater facility underneath it. So it's going to be an easement, parking lot's going to be in an easement that is shared by all three property owners, which is basically Mr. Zober at this time because he's running the properties.
So each, each unit would be assigned the three required parking spaces pursuant to a cross-easement agreement?
Yes.
Okay. And then finally, from Section 205132, and that has to do with retaining walls in the front yard. Could you explain that?
Yeah, this is all based on conceptual grading. The slope starts back here a little bit. These are man-made slopes down, back here when the road got carved in. We have to make this parking lot much more flatter than the slopes that are out there. So what we would do is, we'd put retaining walls along the front and along this side over here to basically, the parking lot's going to be up higher, and it's going to drop right down to grade, and there will be minimal disturbance out front except for where the grade tapers into the wall.
So the retaining walls would be a structure in the front yard, and you'd need setback relief from that, is that accurate? Okay. And is there anything else that would be required in order to change the use of this property from commercial to residential so as to be permitted to construct three townhomes?
No, that, that was the list.
Okay, all right. And just for clarification, point out where the railroad's located from the lot?
Railroad's on this side.
Okay.
Right next to the property.
Okay.
And then we, you handed out the, the rendering, the elevation and the-
I haven't done that yet.
Okay, there are the next slides up there.
Just to be clear, all these variance requests are the result of wanting to have a residential use in a C commercial zone property, correct?
Pretty much.
Okay. And that's all self-created by the fact that you want to do this project, correct?
Right.
Yes.
Okay. And I didn't hear any evidence or any articulation of a hardship as to why a 14,000-square-foot commercial property couldn't be developed commercially, especially when the person that owns these properties owns the two adjoining properties. Is there, is there some hardship here, or is it just something you'd like to do?
I'm going to call Mr. Zober, and he'll testify as to the size of the lot and the use of the lot for commercial purposes.
So you're, Mr. Zober's going to testify to this board that you can't develop a 14,000-square-foot lot commercially?
No, I don't think he's going to testify that you can't develop. He's going to tell you that it's very difficult to develop a 14,000-square-foot lot for commercial purposes because of the size and the configuration of the lot. That would be his testimony.
All right.
Not that it's impossible.
Okay.
I'm not going to lie to you.
That would be hard.
So I think we've marked the certification as applicant's Exhibit 1. I'd like to introduce, this is applicant's Exhibit 2, and that is a front elevation of the proposed townhouse. Now, there's four in that picture, obviously, there would only be three, but these are the actual unit designs that the applicant is seeking approval for. And in connection with that, I'll provide as Exhibit A3, the floor plan, which is a two-page document, shows the layout of the first floor and second floor. This is a two-story structure with a basement. And as you can see, there's a total of approximately 1,260 square feet of living space proposed. I don't know if there's any questions for Mr. Young. If not, I'd like to call Mr. Zober.
Do you solemnly swear the testimony you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth to help you out?
Yes, I do.
Say your name and number, please.
Richard Zober.
And Mr. Zober, what is your relationship to JRZ LLC?
I'm the managing member and owner of JRZ.
Okay. And how long have you been the managing member and owner?
A few years. I don't know exact the timeframe, but it's been a while, years.
And you're familiar with the property, obviously, that we're discussing here tonight, correct?
Absolutely, yes.
And it's your request that you would like to have the property's use changed from commercial to residential so as to be permitted to erect three townhomes, correct?
Correct.
And why is that?
If, if you know the, the road that the driveway's entering on, it's right next to the railroad tracks, and it's right at the corner of the Cedar and Coventry. So the property that's on the corner, when they come under the bridge, can get into their property pretty reasonable, but as you try to make the right-hand turn onto that street, and also if there's traffic coming down, it's a very tight, narrow road. Of course, we would always like to try to develop commercial there, but it, it would be very impractical to add more commercial into that particular lot because you can't get to it from Second or Magnolia without actually going down the narrower street. So our concern was, when we were looking at it, was if we did put a commercial there, even if someone with a larger pickup-type business or a small flatbed or a truck would be, it would create definitely a traffic problem. Also, with the location, it would help with residents that want to work in the area, and it would also, and provide housing there. So we, we did think about it for quite a bit of time and felt that trying to use that as commercial would just create more of a problem with in, access in and out of that narrower street. And, and if you look back from old data, the history of that street wasn't always that wide. The railroad put in guardrails and fencing, which moved into, into Cedar Avenue and also Coventry that made it even narrower. So we've, we've always been battling with that street on the width of it. So we felt that residential would be a lot less of a traffic burden, easier for trucks getting in and out. If, if, it would, there would be elimination of the truck need going in and out and more, smaller residential-type vehicles, and that, that's why we felt that this would be the best use for it.
And how about the size of the lot in question? Is that difficult to develop from a commercial standpoint?
Yeah, at this point in time, it would be very difficult to, to get an ideal building size that would be in demand. A lot of different building sizes are in demand, but it would have to be too small. I don't think we'd have a really good use for it that we could build there. It would have to be a very small structure from, from what, from what we had looked at, so it was really just very difficult to figure out how to keep it in the commercial form without generating other problems.
I have no further questions for Mr.-
Okay, just to, just to be clear, if a residential use were permitted, they'd still be dealing with the commercial truck traffic, right, in and out?
Yeah, the, the amount of commercial truck traffic going down there is, is very little because leaving all the other commercial locations, they can use Second or Magnolia, whereas that property, you would have to use Coventry.
Okay, but whatever they're doing now, whether they're using it or not, it wouldn't change?
No, it wouldn't change.
And just, just one more question from my part.
I have a couple. Sorry. The only yard would be the one that's in the front that you're showing on the photos. I do see there's a proposed fence in the back, but it, I don't have dimensions there. Looks to be about five, maybe seven feet from the back of the property line to be a fence?
No, not the back.
That's an, that's an existing fence.
Right.
That's there.
Oh, it says proposed fence on the plans that you gave us?
Oh, okay, then that's to, that's to act as a buffer so that the residential people living there wouldn't have to look at the commercial properties. So that's the easiest way to create that visual barrier.
Okay, and then I see proposed sanitary sewer main extension. That's something that you've worked with Bristol Township Sewer then along with as well?
Yeah, that, that's where the existing main is in Second, on Second Avenue.
So you'd be tying into that?
Yes.
Now, one more question.
Okay.
The basements, I see there are already three home, or three-bedroom, three-bathroom homes. Would the basements be the full gamut of the house, and would they be able to add additional living spaces?
There, there's no basements.
You meant, someone mentioned basement.
Yeah, I was told there was going to be no basements.
No.
Okay.
Never mind that question.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Are any of the other properties in the area zoned R4?
No.
So it doesn't match the neighborhood?
It's R3, right next to it.
Your application seems to mention R3, but the presentation was based on R4.
Yeah, that, R3 is this, the adjacent property on the left-hand side of this screen when it was up. R4 is the first time you can use a townhouse type of unit, so.
All right, that's the only zone it's permitted in.
Understood.
Any questions? If there's no other questions, we'll rest. Thank you.
Any other questions for the board? Bob, you ready?
No, Mark.
On the yard, front yard, side yard, backyard, I know the center has no yard. How much backyard space do they have? It's not looking too much at the plan.
I think it's 55 feet.
Okay, 55 feet to fence.
Yes.
And front yard?
62.
Is that combined? For all three units?
E, each unit has 63 feet to the Coventry Avenue and 55 feet to the rear property line from the unit itself.
Yeah, from the back of the unit.
Right, the back of the unit and the front of the unit.
All right, thank you.
And we were clear on the proposed fences on the property line, not across the back, correct? We were clear that the proposed fence was on the property line and not on the back, correct?
No.
Oh, no, you weren't?
That's why I asked.
Oh, okay.
It looked like it's 5 to 7 feet on the scale of the drawing.
Yeah, no, so if you look at the plan, you'll see that there's a line that says proposed sanitary sewer main extension, which may have been confused for the line right above it that says proposed fence. The proposed fence is along the eastern boundary line of the property, whereas the proposed sanitary sewer runs about 10 feet off the back edge of the townhome. But that's not a fence. There is no fence in the rear yard until you get to the property line.
Do you have a proposed height of the cutting wall in the front yard?
I believe that Mr. Young indicated it would be approximately 5 feet. Is that accurate, Mr. Young?
It'll be 5 feet at the highest and taper down to nothing.
And then you're looking at a height variance from the front yard, correct?
Um, 4 feet. We could probably make that work.
Is there any reason why you're not just putting, you know, one residential house on this property and using that as a rental instead of trying to squeeze three in?
Well, I would assume that it's because Mr. Zober wants to maximize the use of the property, but just so you know, those townhomes, those townhomes, the sizes of the townhomes meet or exceed the zoning requirements for the A3 use, so they're not undersized townhomes by any stretch of the imagination.
No, but you wouldn't need half the amount of variances.
I, I would assume you're probably accurate, yes, that we, well, we need all the first five because they're all related to the fact that it's in the commercial zone, but we probably wouldn't need the maximum density or the open space requirement. So we'd probably eliminate two or three of those variances requested.
What's the closing of the board?
I make permission to deny the application.
I'll second. Hold the board.
Mark?
Yes, to deny it.
Gerard?
Yes.
Colleen? Andy, yes.
Thank you. One five five Bristol Realty Company LLC.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Stephen Pollack, member, attorney representing one fifty-five Bristol Realty LLC, who is under an agreement of sale to purchase the property for a proposed adult daycare. If I may approach, I've premarked exhibit A one through A thirty-one. We also have a, an overhead presentation too, and I just wanted to have everybody have something they should follow.
All right, probably go right on here. Are the proof of mailings in here?
Oh, yeah. Mr. Fetterman, it's, it is in our A seven, A seven B and A seven C, and then our pictures at, but I will hand up. And then at our, our pictures which are at A thirty A, but I will hand up. For the record, this was the list of who we mailed to. Here are return receipts.
Great.
Attached to that is a certificate of mailing.
Thank you.
And here is a proof of we posted on two pro, uh, two sides, both in-house circle and Wharton. And I believe that they stayed up the whole time, so that was good.
Thank you very much. You can proceed.
Okay.
And just before doing so, just tell the board what the essence is.
The essence is, this is a special exception. So this is, you know, a little bit different than I guess, you know, the variance and the hardship issue. This is a use that is permitted as long as we can show that we meet certain criteria in the code. And we're not going to cause a nuisance or we're going to be anything worse than what you would anticipate with, and this is an adult daycare. So we're not going to be adding anything to the building. We're not going to be expanding anything. Activities are going to be inside. There are ninety-three parking spaces on the property. We have with us today Marie Pandaloni, who is a registered traffic engineer in the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania to address the issue of traffic safety and whether we're going to create undue hazards in the Keystone, this is in the Keystone Park. Industrial Park, and it's right on the, the corner. It was formerly the site of Cummins, Cummins Power Systems, and they are moving to another building in the same industrial park and no longer need it. My client, Dimple Desai, is going to buy the building. She's under an agreement of sale. Because she's currently about three miles down the road on, on Veterans Highway in Levittown. But she's, and she'll testify that she's in a building that the owner wants to sell it and she can't afford to buy it. And she needs to be in the area and wants to stay in the area. And this building, after an exhaustive search, this is about the only thing that's available these days that would fit her needs beyond one level. Because the existing building where she is is about ninety thousand square feet. This'll, you'll see in, in the brochure and everything, it's about twenty thousand square feet, just a little under twenty-three thousand square feet. So Marie Pandaloni will be able to testify, this is one of those rare occasions, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, we're going to be able to say, because you'll hear testimony that everybody comes by van. They have their own transportation system. Right now, we have a license and it's at A nine in your packet from the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania that allows one hundred and twenty-eight clients right now for the adult daycare. And even if we were to go up to what is a maximum, and we suggest that given that we have ninety-three spaces, eighty-eight regular, five accessible handicap, that right now, that if the board were to see fit to grant the special exception, we would have no objection to a provision that would say two hundred, no, a maximum of two hundred and forty clients and, which would allow enough for the clients and forty-eight spaces for the employees. Because under the code, I need one-for-one parking for employees and I need one-for-six with regard to clients. So now, also a function of what you'll hear is that in order to get even an increase in our licensing, the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania's Department of Aging has to come out and look at the new facility and certify it. You also hear testimony, and I'm just trying to give you the proffer, that this is not going to be a light switch where the minute we're there, we go from one twenty-eight to even the two forty. You need clients, you need to have people with COVID. They've had a reduction in the number of people. They have to stay at least six feet apart. They only can have two at a table. So there are a lot of restrictions that have limited what you can do. So we're not going to go from one twenty-eight all the way up to two forty in an instant. But Marie Pandaloni, our traffic engineer, will say, even if we did go that way, crazily enough, because I was the chairman of a zoning hearing board in Lower Moreland Township in Huntington, in Montgomery County, I never heard somebody come and say, after you've got everything that we're going to do, we're still at a level service of A. But you're going to hear that we're still at a level service of, of A as we impact, have really a minimal impact on Wharton and Rittenhouse Circle, even Veterans Highway up at, you know, the entrance to Chris, to, to Keystone Park. So with that, as I said, I think we're going to meet all the criteria that are in the, in the code with regard to a special exception. If I may, Mr. Chairman, call my first witness. Okay, call Dimple Desai. And I guess, how do I, you won't need to? Okay, and if I want to adjust, are you going to run it for me, Mr. Mettager?
Just tell me what exhibit you want.
Okay, okay. So will you state your name and address for the record?
Can you raise your right hand, please? Do you solemnly swear the testimony you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth to help you guide?
Yes, I do.
I don't know. Do I need a green light on this? Push it. Yeah, there it is. Got it.
I'll use one and one use the other.
All right, you want to use this one?
Yeah.
Okay. Now, Dimple, you are the owner and operator of what's known as the Ben Salem Adult Daycare Center. Is that correct?
Yes, I am.
And you are a principal with one fifty-five Realty, Bristol Realty LLC that will be the owner of the building if you're, if you go through with the agreement of sale. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, and you are currently located at three eleven Veterans Highway, Suite one hundred C in Levittown, PA. Is that correct?
That's correct.
And, but your business there is a tenant?
Yes.
Uh, and if you can, you'll be purchasing this and you will be the owner of the property?
Yes.
Okay, why do you have to move from Levittown?
Because our tenure lease is up and he wants to sell the building. So I have to find a new home for my clients.
Okay, so as I represented, that the existing property you're in is about ninety thousand square feet?
Yes.
Is that correct? And you can't afford to buy a building that has ninety thousand?
It's empty. It's only, we are only the, we are using the twelve thousand space. The rest of the building is empty. So there, we can't afford that space, even if we wanted to.
And did you ask the owner if you could, could expand within the building?
Yes, we did.
And what was his response?
He said, there's no point because we're selling the building.
Okay, and so you went on a search and found this building at one fifty-five Rittenhouse Circle. Is that correct in Bristol? Okay, your daycare is licensed by the state. Isn't that correct?
Yes.
And I'll, I'll turn your attention to what we've premarked. Mr. Chairman, members of the board is exhibit nine, which is, oop. Exhibit nine, which is the license from the Department of Aging for Ben Salem Adult Daycare LLC. And it's, right now, it says it may not exceed one hundred and twenty-eight persons. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Can you explain to the, to the board how licensing works with regard to population, the number of people you can have? And also the number of staff that you would need to?
Yeah, so for, for every five clients, we need one staff. We have to get the license from Department of Aging. They come out, they see our location. We have to have nurses on location. We have to have a contract with a doctor. We, all our staff needs to be CPR certified. We have a vendor that provides food and they're approved by Department of Agriculture. We have a, a activity director in the program, a social worker that comes in that helps them for like housing, if they need help. So it's a full day, a, a full day program where the seniors get the need that they, they need and we provide the services.
Uh, so why don't you tell the board, what are your days and hours of operation? You're not going to be seven days a week, correct?
No, we're open Monday to Saturday. And we, our clients start coming in at eight and they leave by two.
So every day they leave by two?
Yeah, and Saturday, it's like fifty clients coming and they leave by one thirty, eight to one thirty.
Okay, now, how do your clients arrive and depart from, how do they get there?
Uh, we, we use.
Driven there by their, their families or do they come by van?
Uh, they come in a van. It's a fourteen passenger bus and we use Mercy Fleet Transportation and they are approved by the state.
I asked the board to turn in, in the our exhibit package to A thirty C, which is the Ben Salem Adult Daycare Pictures, pages fifty-five through sixty-seven. And if you look at those pictures, you will see at pages sixty-four, sixty, sixty-four, sixty-five, sixty-six and sixty-seven. Dimple, can, I, let me, I'm asking the board to take a look at pages sixty-four, sixty-five, sixty-six and sixty-seven. What do they show?
The buses that we use.
So those are the buses that you use on a daily basis that bring the clients to the property in the morning and then take them home at night?
Yes.
Okay, and about how many trips are there generated right now with your current use?
So they go in the morning and they drop them off and then in the evening they pick them up and they drop them off at home. So about four to five trips.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, now, with regard to, you testified that you have, we'll show the board at A ten. If the board were to look at their packet A ten, that is your organizational chart. And for your current staffing needs, this is basically your organizational chart and what you have, right?
Yes.
You have the Ben Salem organizational chart, the owners, but you're the administrator, Dimple Desai.
Yes.
You have nursing. You have two nurses that you're showing?
Yes.
And you have kitchen aides, activity aides, social workers, and then several aides, and that amounts to about twenty employees, correct, right now?
Yes.
Okay. And then some of the services you provide are at our A eleven, which is the next page, members of the board. And this is a brochure that you have, and these are some of the things that you do for programming. Is that correct?
That's correct.
And that includes nursing home, nursing services and medical screens, physical
Exercise.
Occupational therapy on site, medical administration, physician eye and podiatrist dental services. You will provide them with a dentist or get them to a dentist if they need it?
Yes, yes.
And what are the age, what's, what's the minimum age that you can go? Because I may want to go there myself.
It's sixty and up.
A little gray. I'm a little gray these days.
Sixty and up.
Sixty and up. And you, I guess you have showering, serving nutritional breakfast and lunch. We'll get to that. Structured activities, we'll get to that. Exercise groups, yoga meditation, speakers and entertainers, special interest groups, movies, music TV, holiday and birthday parties, spiritual activities, organized trips and other things that are on this that everybody can read for themselves. But the point is you're not warehousing these people. You're not just bringing them here and just putting them in a corner.
No.
You actually have an active full day for these people. Is that correct?
That's correct.
And if you were to look at A fifteen, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, you would see in our packet at A fifteen, the kinds of activities that they, they do do on a, on a, on a daily basis that you plan out the month, it looks like.
Yeah, our clients love bingo. That's their favorite game.
And if you see, I just want to, if my fingers will work, I'm sorry, members of the board. Well, this was May of, just May of twenty twenty-two, and there's a, a full day of, of different things. I mean, even go beyond the, the one thirty, but I guess that's.
Yeah, so we, if the clients needed to stay more, we have that ability.
But you don't have that many people
No.
right now that are staying beyond.
No.
And even if they did stay beyond, they get taken back by the van. Is that correct?
That's correct.
So how about your staff? Do they get there by car?
Yes.
Okay.
They carpool.
They do, some of them carpool. Okay, but the maximum you have right now is about twenty, twenty employees. Is that correct? And if you go to A fourteen, A, B and C, Dimple, I'll show you those. Those are the certificates, the, are the registrations for your doctor, Doctor.
Chandresh Patel.
Chandresh Patel. And then you have. Sure. You want me to just spell it? Chandres, C-H-A-N-D-R-E-S-H and Patel, P-A-T-E-L. And then you have two nurses.
Yes.
And at fourteen B, we have the registration as a registered nurse for Bhumi Patel, B-H-U-M-I, Buma Patel. And she is a license number RN seven one six five seven seven with a license that expires on April thirtieth of twenty twenty-four. So that's, she's a current nurse. And then you also have a, a second nurse who's affiliated with you. And that is Sally Abraham Sherian Sally, S-A-L-Y. Middle name Abraham, A-B-R-A-H-A-N, last name Sherian, C-H-E-R-I-A-N. And she also is a registered nurse with the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania with license number RN two six three eight eight two L with an expiration date of ten thirty-one, twenty twenty-three. And what, what do the nurses do for, how, how often are they there? Do you have one on the premises at all times?
They're there, it depends on, when we have to do vitals, everybody, we do vitals bi, vitals bi-weekly. So we take their temperature, we, we check their weight, we check their blood pressure, we check their diabetes. So if anything goes up and down, we have to notify the doctor. So those, that is done bi-weekly for all the clients. So for a hundred clients, the two, we will need two nurses there. When we have to do their care plan, when the doctor tells us to watch certain thing about a client, then that's when we have to monitor them and that, that, that's when we need two nurses. Usually it's one, one nurse at premise. And then we have a CNA we have and.
And do you provide and administer their, if permitted by a doctor, do you give them their medication if they need it during the day?
Yes.
Okay, but that's only if their doctor
We have an order, yeah.
Gives you the order.
The physician's order, yeah.
Okay, and if the board would like to, if you go to that A thirty C picture, the rest of the picture is fifty-five through sixty-three, you will see, this is your existing facility at
Three eleven.
At three eleven in Levittown. And this shows, I guess it depicts that you, you only have two chairs at each ta-
Yeah.
At each table, and that's been in a imposition by
Because of COVID.
By COVID.
Yeah.
And you have this long hall, an open, open hall,
Yeah.
Open rooms, although it looks like you do have some side rooms. I think our, yeah, our A fifty-eight shows like a, an activity room.
Yeah, we have guys that play cards. They have a prayer room that a priest comes out and does prayer for clients.
And you have A sixty shows like the refrigerator, I guess where you keep
Yeah.
your medications and other things. And then A sixty-one is just looking sort of back towards the, the front. And then we, just to show you that they do have well-appointed and clean bathrooms. And I guess like Alfred Hitchcock, I put myself in the picture in sixty-two. And sixty-three. So those are just to show you the, the, the level of cleanliness and thoroughness that you have right now.
Mr. Pollack. Okay, it's obvious your packet's very, very, very complete. We could probably be here for three hours.
Yeah, okay.
So, so really, what I'm interested in, I think what the board needs to hear is who are your experts?
Okay.
What are they going to say?
Let me.
And then, and then I think we'd want to hear from anyone in the audience, because I think it's a matter of getting the board comfortable in terms of them asking you questions, your client questions, and you could put the right person up to give the answers.
That'll be great. As I said.
If there's anyone from the audience that
Let me bring up Marie Pandaloni. She's our traffic engineer. She has a report that she could give up to the board. Because, because one of the, obviously, you know, the biggest, one of the biggest standards standards that you always have to show for a, a special exception, and it's, I guess it's paragraph E of, of your code, that, you know, it's suitable in terms of its effects on highway traffic and safety, with adequate access arrangements to protect the streets from undue congestion and hazard, so, Ms. Pantoloni's done a study, do you have the copies you can hand off?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, you worked hard on the report, let's give it out. It's in our overhead, but you figure-
It's fine, I presume you want to move all this into evidence, right?
We'll move everything into evidence.
Okay, good.
It's listed, Marie's report is in, is A22, and we said it would be supplied at the hearing, so-
Okay.
We are supplying it at the hearing, how about?
Good.
We're doing what we said.
I have extras, do I share them with your-
Nighttime reading.
No, 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 don't leave them. Anybody else want any?
Don't leave them.
Do you want to?
Sorry.
So, why don't, instead of me going through everything, Marie's CV is at A21, let's get her sworn in, right?
Do you solemnly swear the testimony you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth to help you guide?
Yes, I do.
Okay, Marie, you want to state your name and address and-
My name is Marie Pantalone, I work for Safe Highway Engineers, we're located at, on 36 Trevoce Road in Trevoce, Pennsylvania.
Okay, and we have Marie's CV is at A21-
I've looked at it, and, and she's satisfactory, what, what is, what opinion is she going to express?
Go ahead, Marie, tell, tell the board in a nutshell, as we said.
So I did a traffic study estimating what the traffic impact is, so with the amount of traffic that's generated by the Ben Salem Adult Daycare today, and I also did a maximum build-out analysis, anticipating that the township was going to want to know, because we have so much excess parking and space, whether there is a, a traffic impact should the business grow to that level, my traffic impact study found that I, that the existing driveways and the study area intersections all operate at overall level of service A, there is a negligible impact, there's no impact at all, the primary reason for that is because there's, it's such a low trip generator, when you have all of your clients arriving in transit bands, you know, the, the amount of traffic arriving in an hour is, is minimal.
So, there are, there are a lot of driveways to this property, correct?
Yes, there's three existing driveways, all of which provide ingress and egress, for the purpose of the traffic study, I had assumed that all the van traffic was going to come in one driveway, that was the easternmost driveway on Rittenhouse Circle.
So would this be the picture A14, I believe, that's on Rittenhouse?
Is that Rittenhouse, yes.
So, if you look at 3814, members of the board-
What number, 30?
30, applicants 30 hyphen 14 is the picture, it'll show you that main driveway on Rittenhouse Circle, if I may, this is the, this is the picture, just so they're looking for it.
Got it.
The reason, the reason I assume that all of the transit bands would enter in that driveway is so that the van could traverse across the front of the building, and have the exit to the van facing the front of the building, so that the clients could depart the van and enter the van without having to walk in the, in the parking aisle, but all of the driveways, I mean, as long as the van traverses the site in a clockwise orientation, such that the exit doors are always facing toward the building, really, all of the driveways are, are acceptable, and able to accommodate the traffic that's projected.
So based on the number of parking spaces that you found, and did you find there was 88 regular spaces and five handicap spaces on the property at this point?
That is true.
And, given the numbers that Ms. Desai told us about needing one, one space for each employee, and then, and we have a need for-
Right, yes, it's my understanding that Ms. Desai is licensed to accommodate 128 clients, if she did, if she was so fortunate to expand her business to 240 clients, and have her licensing modified in order to accept that level of clients, there still would not be a traffic impact associated with the site.
She would need 48 employees, and-
Correct.
And we would just-
Correct, so-
We still have about that.
I, I wanted to also mention that I reached out to Panoni to scope the traffic study, to make sure that I was including Panoni Associates.
Who is Panoni and Associates, just for the record?
The township engineer, township traffic engineer, to make sure that my traffic study scope was adequate, I explained what the adult daycare wanted to do, the intersections that were included in the study was the signalized intersection of Veterans Highway and Wharton Road, and the unsignalized intersection of Wharton Road with Rittenhouse Circle, as well as the three existing driveways.
Okay, so, Marie, let me ask you this, do you have an opinion based upon a reasonable degree of traffic engineering certainty, that this property is exists, and given the use it's going to be put to, that it's suitable in terms of its effect on highway traffic and safety, and it does have adequate access arrangements, and it will protect the streets from undue condition and hazard from this use?
True.
You, you believe?
I guess.
And what's that based on again?
Um-
Your opinion.
My, my opinion as a traffic engineer and my analysis.
Okay, and also you found that, there's also a concern in the code, that whatever happens at night doesn't provide direct glare or hazardous interference of any kind to neighboring properties, since this property, from the parking lot area, since this property won't be used at night, there, what is your impact with that?
Then there should not be an impact to the neighboring lots.
Okay, we would submit, Marie, your, your report and her conclusions, and open to any questions that the board may have with, with regard to that, I have with me Mr. Subash, Subash, I'm going to really mangle your name, Mazumdar M, Subash is S-U-B-H-A-S, Mazumdar M-A-Z-U-M-D-A-R, who is our registered architect, we didn't have his resume at the time, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, we'll have it now.
S-U-B-A-S-H?
What's the crux of his testimony?
S-U-B-A-S-H.
Well, we were just going to say two things, one, talk about, I believe, Mr. Metagor, I don't think we need to do anything, we're asking, we're just going to take the existing signage and put Ben Salem over the existing signage, so I don't think we're going to need any variances for signage, and it was just, he was going to give you the layout, we do have, we do have the plan for the interior layout, just, and just as a status of, as we said, we're not doing anything exterior, and I don't know if we got Dimple, Ms. Desai to say anything about, you know, that, we didn't ask for any play area outside, so everybody's always watching, the staff is, and, and so that they can't, nobody will be out there wandering aimlessly in an industrial park, so the staff is always there, so, they, you already have Subash's plans, um-
What, what tab are they under, in case?
They are tab six, but I, what I didn't do, though, they, they're the modified plans of the PDF, when we filed, we had to present, I think, like eight copies, so I see Mr. Grillo definitely has the same plans that are there, and it just has the survey plan, it was originally the survey plan, Subash has a, has a plan at, at A, A20, which just talks about, as I said, there were pre-existing signage, there's a monument sign, sort of at the round corner of Rittenhouse and Wharton, we could show you some pictures, but that's just going to, instead of saying Cummings, it'll now say Ben Salem Daycare, the sign in that main, main driveway where people will be coming in, there was another monument sign right near the building, that's just going to change from Cummings to Ben Salem Adult Daycare, the existing signage at the, at the driveways are going to remanage, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, so, so the point, the point of his expertise is that the plans you're presenting to the board-
Are accurate.
Are done by, by a licensed architect, excuse me.
Done by a licensed architect, okay.
Good, tell us, Steve.
Done by a licensed architect, it shows the open floor plan, to show you that, you know, if anything, I guess we're going to add some bathrooms inside, but other than that, it shows you that there's no expansion or extension of the existing, existing building, we're just going to live within the confines of this building, and, and Dimple, there will be no other tenant.
No, just us.
Right, so, so with that, Subash, I don't know if you want, want to hear from him?
I think if there's a question that comes up, the fact that he's available is good.
If you want to swear him in, though, maybe just-
Might as well swear him in, in case someone has a question for him.
Do you solemnly swear the testimony you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth to help you guide?
Yes, I do.
Okay, so with that, Mr. Chairman-
And just ask him if he agrees with what you've represented.
Yeah, Subash, you've heard what I've stated on the record, if, is it true and accurate?
Yes.
And if you were to test, do you adopt that as your testimony, as if you were saying it yourself tonight?
Yes, I do.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
And, Ms. Desai, if there's anything else that I mentioned and said that wasn't covered by you, do you, you heard what I stated on the record, do you adopt that as your testimony today?
Yes.
And it's accurate and true, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, so with that, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Federman, we would ask for all our exhibits to be admitted into the record, and-
We'll, and we'll leave your record open, because, just in case there's questions from the board, or people-
Yeah, the other, the other thing is, we do have in there, the sewer invoice and water bills to show you that there is adequate water and sewer, because there is something in the, in the, in the special exception code that talks about at least the certificate of, from a, a public authority, but I would think, it seemed it was more like if I was creating a whole new building that didn't already have service, that I would have to get something to show we have capacity, but since the prior use by, and I, prior use by Cummings was a, a, an, sort of like an office industrial use, we already have existing waters, isn't that correct?
Yes.
So that would, they're also in there to try and meet that, that prong, we, just as a part of argument, I included a portion of the comprehensive plan, because we have to say, we're in compliance with the comprehensive plan, and there is a portion of the comprehensive plan at A28, that talked about what do you do for non-residential properties, what are you looking to do with non-residential properties, and you're looking to use, come up with uses that don't have a significant impact on the existing highway structure, and from what you've heard in the testimony tonight, we're not going to have that kind of an impact, and you also want to have adaptive reuses of buildings, so they don't become vacant, as we said, Cummings is moving to another location within the park, but that would leave this vacant, we did attach the real estate bills and school district bills, so you can see, there's a significant tax revenue, so hopefully this is a good use, and, you know, it's really just moving into the existing building, and therefore we believe we meet that criteria, so I would suggest that if the board looks favorably, that we have hopefully addressed all the various criteria in the ordinance with regard to this, and we would rest, and be open to any questions the board may have.
I got one question, the Cummings used, what did Cummings use it for, is it just office space, or was it part of their manufacturing?
Office space.
Okay.
Other questions from the board?
Mine.
I'll get it.
No questions, Mark.
Anyone from the audience?
Anyone, anybody from the audience want to speak for or against this project?
Ready for a motion?
I'll make a motion to pass it.
I'll second.
All aboard.
Mark?
Yes.
Gerard?
Yes.
Colleen?
Yeah.
Andy?
Yes.
Thank you very much, members of the board, have a great night.
Have a nice night.
You beat the record, I didn't think you'd be, when I saw that list, I thought you'd be here all night.
Well, we could have been all here all night with just what you brought us, I don't even know how the hell you knew what was in there, would have taken me a year to figure that out.
Well, you know, I go, when I come out, when you're in Philadelphia, you're just sort of bullshit, but when you're out in the suburbs, you have to do it for real.
Yeah.
You have to put a case on, solicitors ask you questions like, what's the hardship?
We need a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Thank you.
All in favor?
I'll second.
Mark?
Yes.
Gerard?
Colleen?
Me, I'm good.
Let's go.